Ready Carl, what about those motions and he needs?
He's trying to make us do it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just the first base, they didn't know about the backer.
Are you ready to get started? Yeah, he's is is Dennis on? Yeah, yeah.
I don't think she can hurt you too much.
Uh, we're gonna start soon.
Is Dennis on one?
Dennis didn't.
He's not gonna come. Okay.
Voting system, voting system will act faster.
Dan, just let me know when you're ready, okay?
Man, you need to have me for chapel.
Would you mind giving the prayer?
Nah, I said you need to have me for chapel.
I'd like to call our regular six o'clock PM, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Glad to see everyone tonight and thank you for coming. We do have a quorum, we have six of seven voting members supervisors present, and we're gonna use the electronic voting board with that. Vice Chairman Chambers, if you would lead us in the invocation and then in the pledge of allegiance, please, sir.
Kelly, pray. Father, we come right now with thankful and grateful hearts for you and the blessings. We realize you've been a help in ages past and you has a hope for years to come. We pray in your name, in this meeting, we pray in whatever be done, be done according that will and that will only. Praying will bless our citizens that came out and bless our nation out in a special way. This we pray in your name for Jesus' sake, amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the states of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Chambers. Our next order of business is G, approval of the agenda as amended, that's before you.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one change.
Sure.
M is already done.
So we're gonna remove M in M one, okay. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay, the motion by Supervisor Matthews is seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers to adopt the agenda as amended. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor vote aye, those no on the board. And it's not working.
It is now.
Oh, okay. And that motion is unanimous, six to zero. The next item is H, approval of the minutes. And just a reminder to use the board as we make motions and vote, please. Be ready to go.
Not yet. So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to adopt the minutes as presented. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? Those in favor vote aye, those no. The motion carries unanimous. Next item is approval of claims, item I. Is there a motion for that, gentlemen?
Don't move.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to approve the claims as presented. Any questions? You'll open the roll, ma'am. Those in favor vote aye, those no. And it's unanimous, six to zero, thank you. J, fourth quarter appropriations, those are in your board packet. So is there a motion to approve the appropriations?
I got a motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Supervisor Bryant, uh, seconded by Supervisor Allen to approve the fourth quarter appropriations. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, vote aye, those opposed, no. Unanimous, six to zero, that motion carries, thank you. K, announcements, are there any announcements from staff or the Board of Supervisors? And I don't see any, so it's now time for item L, public comments. This is a time where citizens get three minutes to speak on any subject that they would like other than the scheduled public hearings. And so we will begin and, uh, Ms. Land will call the names of those signed up.
Joyce Gooden, District Six.
Welcome, Ms. Gooden, thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm actually two people this evening. The first person I'm gonna be is Joe Scruggs, um, from District Seven. And, uh, he could not be here this evening, but he text me his message. And it's thank you to Chairman Miles for your efforts to call Century Link to task. There has been much improvement in their response to service issues. I don't feel this would have happened if not for your dedication to go to bat for the citizens. Keep up the good work Supervisor Miles, and that's from Joe Scruggs in District Six. He's had problems and they've been back and calling, is it fixed? And so wanted to get that out, so thank you from, and I don't know how many other Joe Scruggs there are that Century Link has been trying to help.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden.
Again, thank you from the community. And, um, now I'm Joyce Gooden, District Six, and, uh, Joe Davis is my supervisor. And what I want to say, we just had a recent rela- election, countywide election, that the candidate was running unopposed. But I want to say thank you to Lindsay Taylor, our county registrar, um, for her diligence and, um, her attention to detail. Her attention to detail through each election that I have been involved in has been awesome. Also to the Electoral Board in Buckingham, Gail Braxton, Rick Card- Caldwell and Larry Davis. Their diligence and their training progress, they teach, take each election so seriously. Thank you for them for their support at the polls also. And to the people who voted, thank you for coming out, even though we had only one candidate on that. And I wanna say thank you to, I wanna say to the golf family in District Six. We only had thirty voters at that our poll, and a third of those were from the golf, for golf, okay, that came out. And they weren't calling each other, so I appreciate, so, um, you know, District Six holds up. And the golf family in your district, Chairman, uh, Chambers was awesome. Uh, we still need cellular infrastructure out there, we're having trouble getting our calls out. But again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden, we appreciate that. Are there any other speakers signed up, ma'am?
That's all.
All right, thank you. Before we go to end presentations, I'd like to welcome Supervisor Davis, who has joined us by phone, so we won't be using the electronic voting boards. I'll call for a raise of hands, is that?
We will.
Okay, so we're still gonna use it, okay. So we're still gonna use the board, sorry for that confusion. So our first presentation this evening is Melody Foster, the Executive Director of the Commonwealth Regional Council. She's here to talk about and present a membership dues refund. And welcome, Ms. Foster.
Hey, gentlemen, um, as Jordan said, I'm sure most of you remember meeting me before. I'm Melody Foster with the Executive Director with Commonwealth Regional Council. Um, I'm here to present a membership refund check, but I first wanted to give you a, a brief, um, update on our services over the past year. We had an extremely busy year this past year. Um, the CRC has brought in two million eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in grant funds for the entire region. Of that, Buckingham County received locally three hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So that, you know, directly came to Buckingham County. The types of projects that were funded in locally in Buckingham were broadband, um, projects as well as rescue squad equipment, which included a new ambulance and heart monitor, so I'm sure all of that was very useful to your citizens. Regional projects, which of course you, you know, get an advantage for regional projects as well, because when we get regional funding, all seven of our member counties, you know, benefit from this. Um, we've had funding for election security, um, emergency planning assistance, updated the regional hazard mitigation plan, which it will be a FEMA-approved mitigation plan. And that's something that's very important, because God forbid you ever have a natural disaster, you have to have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan to get FEMA funding. And as we all know, some of those things unfortunately have happened, you know, around the area, for instance, Appomattox years ago. So that's something really important, so you'll be a part of that. And also, if you include that regional funding, that's included in that total, that was two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. So if you add that to Buckingham's total, you know, one-seventh, that would be three hundred and thirty-five thousand for Buckingham County. So those are the types of things that we've been working on, um, you know, as far as grant writing. Um, I also hope that the items of interest that we send each month to you that goes into your board packet keeps you updated on what we do, because I know sometimes, you know, it's hard to keep up with all the different organizations that your members of, so I hope that's been keeping you updated on things that we work on. I think most of the time when you think of us, you think of free grant writing as services that we provide, but we also do redistricting services. I know Buckingham County had some of your own staff do that, but we are doing that for all the other counties that, um, we're, have members of. We also do updates of comprehensive plans, which we've done your plan in the past, so keep us in mind in the future. And then also, one thing we're currently working on right now, that you've probably heard a little bit back and forth about, is we're assisting in exploring the possibility of creating a new regional economic development organization. That's something that the Commonwealth Regional Council Board members asked us to do. So we've been working on that for some time, I'll be glad to give you a quick update of that, if that's something you're interested in. But what I'm here to do is present you a check for four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents in membership dues. As you know, we have a membership policy that sets a cash fund balance. It's currently, when it's over six hundred thousand, that amount is returned to the membership, um, after it's been audited. So this past audited year, we had an excess of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents. So we return that to all seven member counties, so I have a check with me.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
But what I also always like to say at the end of that is, as you could hear, you know, all the things that we do, you certainly can keep that membership refund, but we also always encourage the possibility that you reinvest that into the Commonwealth Regional Councils, that we can use that moving forward.
Mr. Carter, what did we do last year, if you could refresh our memories, please?
We reinvested it.
So I would ask, would it be your pleasure for that three, I mean, that over four thousand dollar, um, check in terms of the overage refund? You wanna do the same thing as last year, or keep it, or?
I'd make a motion to do that.
Okay, can you use the, use the board if you don't mind, Mr. Matthews? Yes, sir, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to reinvest the money that was presented to us, to, back to the Commonwealth Regional Council. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? Okay? All in favor, please use the electronic voting board.
That Dennis's vote?
Right, so, so, so we got, um, so the county attorney, okay, so that motion passes six to zero. So the county attorney noted that because Supervisor Davis came in after the meeting started, he will not be able to vote. So, uh, just so we're all on the same page. Okay, but, but he, but he is here for input. Okay, thank you.
Did you also want me to talk about the new economic development initiative?
Sure, because I think we have, we have just a few questions of that, that we'd like addressed, yes, ma'am?
I did give, I think you all have a copy of the concept paper, um, that I, that I handed out. I just wanna give you a brief background, I know you've probably been getting some information, I don't wanna take too much of your time, but since I'm here, I thought maybe I could give you a brief update. How this occurred is Prince Eric County requested us last August to look into creating this new regional economic development organization. Um, we've had several meetings, um, one of them was in October, and at that one, we, we kind of did, um, a facilitated meeting where we were gathering input from all the localities, including, and I should say this, five of the seven counties in Air Region that were members of VGA have pulled out of VGA. Charlotte and Lunenburg are the only counties that are still in. But they are also a part of this initiative of us looking at exploring a new regional organization. They're still a member of VGA, but they're open to the idea of being part of this exploration, so I should point that out. So at that meeting, we had Stephen Murray with VEDP, I know he's no longer there, but he was the president and CEO at the time. He did participate in that meeting, he actually requested to participate in the meeting so that make, to make sure that VEDPs' needs were met, um, and were, were stated as to why they, they were, that's important. Lauren Stuhl-Dreyer, who is with the Economic Development Administration, also participated in the meeting. And both of them just wanted to be able to pass on the viewpoints of why it's important to have a regional economic development organization in your region. Um, after that, we had another meeting in November, we brought in Brian David and Liz Povar with Go Virginia Region Three to start facilitating meetings. They facilitated a meeting and brought in three of the successful regional economic development organizations across the state to kind of provide some input. One of them was Southern Virginia Regional Alliance, um, Shenandoah Valley Partnership, and Virginia's Industrial Advancement Alliance. And all of those are rural, um, regional organizations. So they provided, you know, some input. One of the big takeaways that we came away from that meeting that could be something different for this new organization is that we have Longwood University in our region, which is something that's very different, you know, that could be done, um, with a regional organization. And there is already a footprint of that being done in other areas of the state. So one of the takeaways was for Region Two Thousand to put together this concept paper that you have. And out of that, one of the things that we decided to do was put together a small delegation that we would work together to present to Longwood University, um, the idea of being a partnership in this organization. So they worked and put together a presentation, we were asked to first meet with Longwood's staff before meeting with President Reevely. So our thoughts were, we're just kinda doing a trial run for this staff, and then we'll eventually meet with President Reevely. But actually what happened, and I'm actually gonna be reporting this to the Commonwealth Regional Council on Wednesday, is the staff went back and had a meeting with President Reevely, and he actually was on board without even meeting with us. He said, just move forward. So the next steps are, we're gonna apply for a Go Virginia grant to help put together a strategic plan and a roadmap of how this would move forward. Now, I know some of the concerns for some of the localities is, we, we sent out something that we asked, well, could you put fifty thousand dollars as a placeholder in your budget, you know, moving forward? And I know that sounds like a lot of money, that's not necessarily saying you're gonna spend that. The budget that we came up with, it was just a concept, was two hundred and fifty thousand. So basically, that was just five counties divided by two hundred and fifty thousand. We didn't include Charlotte and Lunenburg, we didn't wanna put them in an awkward position, since they're still a member of VGA. So that's where that number came from. It doesn't mean that that would necessarily even be the amount. Um, we're hoping, once we go for the Go Virginia grant, we'll get, you know, a lot more fleshed out on what that would be. As far, again, is that being a lot of money? You know, I guess you get what you invest in something. If you already have money in your budget for economic development, you could consider that a placeholder already. You know, that's just money you've set aside for economic development. And when and if the time comes, you know, the, the organization will decide what the dues are gonna be. So I hope you'll continue to be a part of this, this is just kind of an exploration at this point. And I think it's a good idea for all the localities to be a part of it, so that you get to have a say-so and possibly create a new organization. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, and again, the concept paper's there to give you some information on, you know, what was behind this. I think one of the things you get left out of, if you're not a member of a regional organization, is you don't really have access to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, which is the state organization that brings information to you. Or at least that's what they have told us, that there, there are a lot of things that you, you don't have privy to if you don't have a recognized economic development organization.
Does any supervisor have any questions or any concerns to discuss with regards to, um, that regional economic development organization concept?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews.
Just curious, uh, Ms. Foster, what, who approached y'all to develop this?
Prince Eric County, they sent a letter to the Commonwealth Regional Council and requested that we, um, the council asked the staff to, to look into this. And one of their main concerns was they had pulled out, they knew they were lacking, because they weren't a part of a regional organization. When they were in, they said the reason they pulled out was they never felt like they were getting a return on their investment, which is what we pretty much were hearing from, from most.
Well, I think the five years that we participated, that I was part of it, we never got one red cent as far as, uh, a business relocating to Buckingham County. So that was like seventeen thousand dollars a year, I believe, was our dues. So you multiply that times five, and, you know, that was just, I don't think money that was well spent. So there's any type of guarantee that we're gonna be?
I don't know that you can ever come up with a guarantee, but I would say that if you're on the ground level of creating this organization, I think the way the VGA was created, was created at the state level, and they decided exactly what the foot, footprint was gonna be, and pretty much said, you need, you need to be a part of this. We're trying to do this in a very deliberative process, where the localities provide a lot of input on what do you wanna get out of this? Because, like you said, it could be very different for somebody here in rural Virginia versus someone in a metropolitan area. You know, you might wanna focus more on business attraction and business retention. You might wanna focus more on bringing in new business. You know, getting all of that information upfront, and again, we're hoping with the Go Virginia grant, that will help flesh all that out. And then you can make decisions on how that moves forward and what the cost would be. And another reason for bringing in Longwood is one of the things that we're hoping to do, and I think Longwood's open to it, is that if this was formed, we could use them, not necessarily for cash as part of the project, but they could have a location for the staff to be located. VGA was pretty much a, a one-person staff, that's really hard, I think it was twelve localities that they, he was covering. That's, that's really hard for anybody to do and be successful. So one of the things that we were floating as an idea, this, I don't know if you've heard of the new innovation hub that Longwood is hoping to locate in downtown Farmville, we've flown the idea that this could be actually located there. So that could be a showcase location for the staff, plus some staff support from Longwood, instead of putting cash, just staff support. So some different ways to maybe fund it, because as you know, economic development is very expensive, so.
Is, is it gonna be in collaboration with the SBA that's located Longwood?
Yes, yes, yes.
So funding for that mechanism, and, uh, of course, if you're taking on this new type of duties and stuff.
Well, I do wanna make clear, the Commonwealth Regional Council staff would not be staffing this. You would be hiring someone totally separate who's a professional to do this. But one thing that might come out of this is, you probably know, we've applied for economic development district status. If, when, I shouldn't say if, when, we finally learned we've gotten that. We do receive funding for that at the federal level, and we have asked EDA, could we use some of Air money for that? So that could be another funding mechanism to help this overall pool of money that you need for economic development. But I know in our conversations in that first strategy session, one of the things we talked about was, if you created exactly the same way as the organization that you left, you're gonna get the same results. So you need to, like you said, create it in a way that's gonna work for you, so you get what you want out of it. I don't think any regional organization can ever promise every single member is gonna get prospects and is gonna get, you know, X number of dollars, but I think if you're in on the ground level of creating it, you will be better satisfied.
Are you good, Supervisor Matthews, anything else? Does any other board member have any question? Yes, sir, Supervisor Bryant.
Who's gonna be the fiscal agent?
That's a good question, it probably would be either us, or like I said, now that Longwood is interested in being partner, or Longwood.
Okay, 'cause I know that Mecklenburg was the fiscal agent for the VGA.
Mm-hmm. Probably one or the other.
Okay.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Well, um, I sit on, I represent the county on the CRC, and I wanna thank you for all your hard work, Ms. Foster. So thank you for being here tonight as well.
Thank y'all, thank you very much.
Okay, under presentations, number two has been canceled, Ms. Wallace was unable to appear before us tonight. So we're gonna move to N three. Uh, Ms. Shelley May's Couch, if you would, um, come to the podium, please, and, um, she's representing LOC Family Services Budget Request, that's N three in your packet, so we welcome you, Ms. May's Couch.
Good evening. I am Shelley May's Couch, Director of LOC Family Services. I'm actually the co-cover of District Fourteen Reentry Council, and also a member of the Social Work Advisory Committee in Lo- at Longwood University. As you know, LOC Family Services, um, was developed in two thousand and eighteen. We have served hundreds of individuals, and just recently, um, we completed and actually ended our first federal grant program that named was Changing Lanes, pro- the Changing Lanes Program. In the Changing Lanes Program, um, we served a hundred and seven medium-to-high-risk individuals who were, uh, medium-to-high risk of recidivating, meaning committing another crime and returning back to jail or prison. Within that hundred and seven, hundred and seven individuals, forty-seven participants completed the program, and out of the forty-seven individuals, none committed a new crime or returned back to jail and prison. That was an, a huge success. Our program entails a lot of things, um, and we did present some of what those reentry services entail. With reentry services, we provide, um, emergency vouchers, many people get out of jail, they have no phones, no, no way of contacting probation officers, of course, if they don't report in seventy-two hours, they're gonna get, you know, um, they're usually going to be looking for a violation if they don't do that, but they have no phones, most have no transportation. And we had a lot of people during that time that didn't have housing either, which forced us into, you know, looking for services that we didn't even actually offer in two thousand and eighteen. So we have, I guess you would say, evolved since the start. Only focusing on programming at first, but understanding that the basic needs of individuals needing to, well, returning back to our community was, um, not being met either. Within the four years that we've been established, again, we just completed a federal grant, we were awarded a half a million dollars to provide the services that we provided. We actually, um, you know, successfully completed that with no errors, um, actually being audited and, and going great. We're excited to say that, you know, starting off with just faith, hope and love, we've accomplished a lot, we've changed many lives. And I want to say, we supervised over twelve Longwood students in that facility, in that small building that you all passed on fifteen, uh, is doing great major work. So since inception, um, we have served, in, from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, we have served thirty-three Buckingham residents. Now, if you look at that number, what we find out, and I'm in the situation, just like a lot of directors who are directors of reentry, we're not funded very well. Thankfully, uh, I have a gift from God to write grants, and we have been able to, you know, go without asking, uh, the county of Buckingham or any other county, in the first three years, we didn't ask for anything. We went and we got the funding elsewhere from the federal government. But we're asking our local governments to support, because the numbers are growing. In tw- between two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, over a hundred and fifty individuals were released from Piedmont Regional Jail back into the county of Buckingham. Remember me saying, uh, we only served thirty-three of that one fifty? But knowing that a hundred and fifty individuals have been released back into the county of Buckingham, if you was to times that by twenty-seven thousand, which is the amount, uh, per individual that it costs for an individual to be incarcerated, you're looking at about a half a million dollars, about five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars that the county of Buckingham is paying per year for about a hundred and fifty individuals. 'Cause I think that the county of Buckingham pays a little over seventy-two dollars, uh, a night per person to be incarcerated at Piedmont Regional Jail. So, um, I'm, I'm saying this to say, asking for sixty thousand dollars to be added to the budget, isn't, isn't a lot when we're looking at services. Care management, per se, we have care management, with our case managers, oh my goodness, they do so much. When it comes to preparing an individual to actually get a job, to actually, um, get Medicaid, get social security for those who are disabled, and to, to just say that salary alone a year is about thirty-seven thousand dollars. We're not adding about the, for the thirty-three individuals we served from Buckingham, the fifteen, about fifteen thousand dollars just to get them emergency vouchers for phones, phone cards, emergency food. Thankfully, steps has, um, steps and, uh, faces has helped a lot with that, um, with the food, per se. And we're actually working on getting a voucher program with Goodwill, which hasn't happened in this area. They have it in the cities, but we've never really established a voucher program with Goodwill in this area. Um, and that's not just with reentry services. They don't have a voucher program at our local Goodwill and we should have that. So in addition to not just providing services, but we're actually completing a networking system for not just, um, for individuals who are coming out in reentry. This isn't being done a lot for individuals who are low income. And you just have a lot of organizations doing their own thing, but we all can work together. And I believe if you were to ask some of the directors that are directors of these local, um, organizations around, they would say they know my name and we do our best to try to not redo or, or continue to try to create something of our own where other organizations can fulfill those needs. So also, when you look at the handout that I provided, you would see that what we're trying to do in two thousand and twenty-two is actually strategize the best way to have cost-efficient services for the reentry population, but not just providing a service to say we are doing it, but making sure that it's evidence-based related. So we had a research partner who works with the government office in Maryland to do our research. So meaning he had no connection to want our program to really be successful. Of course, he did, but, you know, he didn't have any connections to the reason why he got the results that he got. He basically was able to research what was there. So with that being said, and being a, a research partner, um, and actually a, a elected official to look at the stats of another whole state, um, to say that we've been able to do what we've been able to do and actually pull research that's con, um, consistent with other researchers that have promoted other documents, I will say that it's very efficient, um, and I'm very proud of what God has done to, um, to get us where we are. I am going to introduce, um, one of our participants, Mr. William Regopolis, who would just inform, yeah, I just wanted him to speak on why he feel that reentry services, such as Loc Family Services, should be budgeted in.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. The reason why I think the continuation of funding should be, uh, considered is because there's a requisite at DOC. It's, uh, mandatory, it's not discretionary, that certain paperwork be, uh, uh, basically appointed to you before discharge. That wasn't the case. I know, but I'm, I'm not the only one. There's hundreds of people discharged without this documentation. I had no way of getting a job and ID and nothing without these people. There was no way. I looked to DOC. Answer. People like me that need people like her. It's as simple as that.
Hey, well, thank you for being here tonight, sir.
You're very welcome.
Does, um, does anyone have any questions for Ms. May's Couch with regards to her, um, handout? And that's on your, uh, desk here and, and, and your pile. So any questions from any supervisors with regards to this budget request?
I have one.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Brian.
In your presentation, you said fifty thousand dollars on your paper. It's sixty thousand dollars. There are ten counties involved in this.
Um, I didn't say, you said fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't say fifty. Where are you fifty thousand dollars at?
I heard the figure of fifty. I don't know whether it was applicable to.
No, a hundred and fifty individuals that are released to the county per year. So if I did, I'm sorry, that was an error on my part.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Supervisor Brian?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Brian, I think you were saying there's ten counties, yeah.
How many of the ten counties in this geographical area, um, are providing funding now?
So currently, sir, as I mentioned, we're just ending a grant funding that was given to us from the federal government. So we, Buckingham is one of the first one because we're located in Buckingham. That doesn't mean that Buckingham is the only. And remember, the sixty thousand has, is nowhere near how much it costs to operate a program of this capacity. And it also goes by numbers. Buckingham actually released up to the top amount outside of Prince Edward, but that's because a lot of homeless people are assigned to Prince Edward versus any other county. But, um, when, when we're looking at, um, funding, I want to say in regards to Buckingham, not only are we just located in Buckingham, but Buckingham actually is the only county that has two prisons currently operating in it as well. I, I guess it was a huge coincidence that we actually ended up doing business in Buckingham. But, um, you know, Buckingham is actually out of all ten counties, the only one that has two prisons in it.
Well, doesn't Ottawa have, doesn't Ottawa have a prison?
They have a prison, but they don't have two.
Right, they have a geriatric facility too, and.
Oh, that's, so, it should be mental. Is that, that's more mental health.
Farm.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Really, it's, it's, you could say a, a three-in-one?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for you, ma'am. How did you come to the sixty thousand dollar amount requested? And are you asking that of all ten localities or is it based on a number?
So it would be in regards to the amount of people we serve per county. And also, as you see, when it comes to emergency vouchers, that was about fif- that was close to fifteen, um, thousand in emergency vouchers that we, we actually allocated towards those thirty-three individuals. And also, in regards to our case managers, our case managers are usually paid around thirty-seven thousand a year. So trying to ensure that we're covering our staff. Because he says me, but it actually is the staff that, that helps him. I mean, I, we talk, you know, to ensure that he gets what he needs. But we need staff in order to do what we do for as many people as we work with.
Okay, any other questions from any supervisor from Ms. May's Couch?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews.
I, I'm just gonna reach out to Mr. Carter, 'cause he, uh, kinda runs the show as far as our budgets are concerned and he would have a better handle on s- any stimulus money that may be available, uh, for any situation like this. Just curious.
I'm not aware of any at the moment, sir.
Okay.
The, the, if, uh, Supervisor Matthews, the ARPA money would not, you're saying?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We can read in too more, some more, I guess more clear definitions, but I don't think it, the way it is, is for this, this kind of situation.
I was just trying to find another avenue for you to, to get what you need. So, uh, we wanna exhaust all those avenues before we.
I appreciate that, 'cause trust me, you know, I am a grant writer. And like I said, before coming to the local government, you know, Board of Supervisors, we ensure that we put, we definitely put action in first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Ms. Shelley May's Couch, I would also say, um, Ms., um, Melody Foster was here with the CRC. And because Buckingham is a member of the Commonwealth Regional Council, which is the biggest grant-writing entity in this region, they could also help you all in, in terms of finding and writing grants that you'd be eligible for. So I'd be happy to get you in contact with her as well.
That would be great. It's always helpful to have assistance. That's true.
Any other questions?
How many employees do you currently have?
Currently, we have two employees and we just, that's only because we ended a grant and we could not continue the staffing of, um, all of our employees. And we start in to fully staff the organization, we need about six employees.
Okay. Does it answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
So right now, we're all working over forty hours.
Supervisor Matthews.
So currently, you have two employees, but that's because your grant ended? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you cannot apply for that grant again, or just curious?
We have, we have, and actually Department of Corrections received that in the running up. Department of Corrections received the, uh, one of our funding sources. So we actually, when we go for funding, we actually go for funding up against the state-funded organization as well.
That was a federal grant, you said.
And it was a federal grant. Yes, sir.
What, what department was that through?
Department of Justice.
Homeland Security have any? I saw we had, uh.
We're working on Department of Labor, though. 'Cause we do have another grant through the Department of Labor, but we're subcontracted under National Restaurant Educational Foundation.
Okay, alright.
So we do have one that's still going.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. May's Couch, thank you and thank you, sir, for being here, too.
Thank you.
So as Ted Reek, and I hope I'm not mispronouncing that too badly, approaches the podium with regards to Jaunt with his budget request, I'm gonna call on our county attorney to, um, to maybe issu- issue a brief statement with regards to Mr. Davis's voting, so we're all clear on this. If you could use the mic, if you don't mind, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I understand there was a question about Mr. Davis being able to participate. When I responded initially, I was shy a couple of pieces of information. I've since learned, as required in the bylaws of the Board, if the individual supervisor notifies the chairman on the day of the meeting, then there are certain procedural things that would allow him to participate. I understand that he did contact you today. So if he is willing to state why he can't be here today and his current location, then the Board can take action to allow him to participate in the meeting pursuant to the bylaws.
And would he, and he would vote by voice, Mr. Wright?
He would vote by voice and, uh, then, hm?
Somebody hit the button, Paul.
Now, if you wanna record it after he votes by voice, it.
We'll call him, okay. Mr. Davis, I mean, I'm sorry, Supervisor Davis, can you hear us, sir? Where's Jamie?
Farcely.
Barely.
Barely hear you.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Hold on one second, Supervisor Davis.
No, he's coming from here.
Can you hear us now, Supervisor Davis? We need a mic. What is?
Love technology.
Be at ease for a few moments, please. Yes, sir, we hear you, but we're gonna put a mic on the speaker so everyone else can hear you, sir.
That's a reason.
Okay, so that's your reason, so we've, and could you tell us your, your approximate current location for the record, sir? Okay, so that satisfies those two requests as in the bylaws. And what we do need now is a vote to allow Mr. Davis to, um, to participate remotely. So we'll need a motion to that effect, so he can vote remotely. And I see the motion has been made by Supervisor Allen and.
Nothing on the.
Oh, wait a minute, it's wrong.
I'm sorry.
There's no voting system for that.
Just do that verbally. Do that verbally. I move that we allow him to vote verbally.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Brian, second by Supervisor Allen to allow Supervisor Davis to participate and remote, um, where he is via telephone. If you want to have any questions, raise your right hand if you're in favor, please, raise your hand. Those opposed, the motion carries six to zero. So Supervisor Allen, I'm sorry, Supervisor Davis is with us, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I wanna make the Board aware that you can only do that twice a year.
Yes, sir. Okay, and you're with us Supervisor Davis as we move on, right? Okay. All right, now I'll call on Ted Reek to approach the podium. And he is with Jaunt with regards to his budget request, and I don't think he is here. Mr. Carter? Okay, so shall we skip that one? And, because we do have that information in our packet. So N five is Rick Ewing with the Central Virginia Library. He's the director regarding his budget request. And at your desk, there is an amended budget request, which he's going to be discussing. So, Mr. Ewing, welcome.
All right, again, uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I could see you here. I see a camera there, but I'm pretty sure it's. A lot, like a lot of things, it's over my head. Chairman Miles, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Carter. I'm Rick Ewing, uh, the library director for Buckingham County. And thank you for, uh, giving me an opportunity to speak. I believe you already have the library's budget request and some supporting information that Mr. Miles just referred to. You should also have that adjustment, uh, in front of you with, uh, with today's date on top of it, a couple of sta- uh, pages stapled together. And I know you just got the adjustment, uh, so I, I, I just finished it myself, uh, late last night, so. As I wrote, uh, to you, uh, there are three main factors, uh, in the, in terms of the increase, uh, that I'm, uh, requesting. Those are the Virginia minimum wage went up, I'm sure you're all completely aware of that, and a reduction in state library funding. And then until last week, uh, joining the Virginia retirement system for the full-time employees of the library. So full-time employees working for the Buckingham, uh, for Buckingham County, Prince Edward County and town of Farmville, they're all, uh, covered under the Virginia Retirement System or VRS. Almost all public library, uh, full-time employees in the state of Virginia are covered by, uh, VRS. It's a real good retirement system. And as well as teachers and others, uh, around the, the state. It's pretty tough to compete in today's, uh, job market without a, 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 a good retirement system for full-time, uh, employees. However, I met with VRS officials last week. I'd been working with Doug Stanley from Prince Edward County on this. And, uh, we, we talked for a long time and they said, uh, that, they told me it's unlikely that the library could join VRS. So I, I said, well, what about the other libraries, uh, that are in, that are just like ours? 'Cause we're nonprofit, we're five oh one C three, even though we are quasi-governmental units. I mean, we're in the, regional libraries are in the Code of Virginia, uh, to set them up. And they said that they just changed the rules. And to, you know, they were real sorry, but, uh, it wasn't gonna work for us. So now, I'm planning on not joining VRS. I met with, uh, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Miles and Mr. Chambers over the last, late last week. And, uh, this has all been happening very recently and, and just in di- in the last days. So I apologize for the adjustment, but anyway. So obviously, that changed my budget. So, uh, instead of VRS, uh, this, there, there are six employees who are not affected by the minimum wage increase. So, uh, so I'm asking for a, uh, cost of living adjustment for those six employees. I'm basing that on what social security has done this year. Social Security Administration is not known to be a particularly generous, uh, organization for their cost of living. But they're doing six percent. As you know, inflation is well over seven percent and doesn't look too good for the future. So five of these six employees haven't gotten a raise in three to five years. Just to full disclosure, I am one of those employees. The one that did get a raise last year earned a master's library science degree, uh, and that resulted in her raise. Just like a teacher getting a master's degree, you get, there's, there's an element of, you know, you get a little more money for that. So as you can see from the wage history that you had in the original packet, our employees are paid pretty modestly, I think. And we don't really, you know, we don't have VRS. We don't have a, uh, uh, what I would call a retirement plan. There's a little tiny stipend that goes into a, an IRA, uh, but you can't live on it, even if you worked there thirty years. So anyhow, all of these changes have resulted in a forty-eight hundred twenty-eight dollar reduction in my original, uh, request. So, uh, moving on to the new minimum wage, uh, that goes into effect January twenty twenty-three, you recall that went up to eleven and now it's, it's scheduled to go up to twelve. That's the largest part of this whole, uh, this whole deal. Most library staff make minimum wage. Those are the folks who are checking your books out, helping you with computers and so on. I've reduced the minimum wage part of my request, uh, mostly upon talking to Mr. Miles. Uh, we, we had a, a, a good conversation about that. That's explained in the adjustment document that you have. And that results in a reduction of five thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars in the total, uh, the total request that I've, um, increase that I've, that I've, uh, requested of you. So I'm, I'm just gonna go beyond the budget for a minute, if I may.
Sure, yes, sir.
So the, the library isn't just a place to check out a book. It's not the library from fifty or sixty years ago, or even in my time as a librarian. I've been in the libraries, uh, as in management since nineteen eighty-four. So, uh, so where, I have a question for you. Where else could, uh, could someone spend a few hours inside and comfortable without spending any money? Is there another place that you can think of, uh, in, well, anywhere, not just Buckingham County? Is there another place that you can think of in, well, anywhere, not just Buckingham County? I'm not really asking you to answer, but it's just something to think about. Did you know that the library staff will help you set up your phone? You get a new phone, and we'll work with you on that. We fax things for people. We give, we'll give you heirloom seeds for your garden. Mr. Matthews had, asked me to put that together, and we're doing it. Your preschool child or grandchild can get a good, get good books mailed to them for free every month, just because we joined the Dolly Parton Foundation in providing that service. You can print at the library from your home, I don't know if you do that or not, and then just pick it up at the library. You can print from your phone. You come into the library, hey, I want to, you know, print this, pardon me, from my phone. So anyhow, the pandemic has hit us pretty hard. I'll admit that, just like everywhere. I don't know any place that didn't get hit pretty hard. But, but we're coming back, and we're coming back strong. We have over a million titles that people can check out, either physically or on, you know, digitally to download. Books, videos, movies, audio, music, the whole shebang. Buckingham County residents now have easy access to the Hampton Sydney College Library, free delivery to them here in Buckingham. And Longwood Library Access is in the works. That has also greatly expanded our, our access for residents. The library has meeting spaces. People go there to meet, just to gather, less formally. Study space for groups and students. People frequently use the library for Zoom calls and Zoom meetings, either individually or groups. Programs are now restarting for children's, children, teens and parent, and I'm sorry, and adults. We provide technology help, as I said, for your devices or helping you use our devices and software, helping people do things like resumes, apply for a job. You can't even apply for a job at McDonald's without a, you know, a computer. We help them, help them do that. We offer printing, 10 cents a page for black and white, 25 cents for color, fax 50 cents a page. Some, you know, I know people who say, you know, I can't get, I can't print at home for that. So they, they would rather just throw, you know, not, not have a home printer, just come into the library. We have high-speed Wi-Fi inside when we're open, of course, but 24/7 in our parking lot. You can go by on a, you know, Sunday morning, and you might see a couple of cars sitting out there using Wi-Fi. And did you know that you can check out a laptop computer for free, just like a book? Take it home, use it, and just bring it back to us in one piece. All in all, I think we do a pretty darn good job serving the residents of Buckingham County. And thanks to you, Buckingham County has a great library. I know you've all been there, and I'm, I'm just feel really good about, about that. I go to a lot of libraries, I've been to a lot of libraries, and that library will match any of them. So I guess I'll ask if you have any questions. I'm going to guess that you do, but maybe not.
Mr. Ewing, I'll ask a quick question just as we kind of kick things off here. Can you, for the two different parts of your budget request, could you tell us how much those are? Because you tell us how much they're reduced by, but you don't tell us actually how much you're asking for for the two.
Yes, just a second.
Sure.
Well.
And if you don't have that, you could always get to Mr. Carter and go, sure.
Actually, and I think Mr. Carter will, will back me up on this. Budgets are complicated beasts.
Absolutely.
And to, to break it down and say that the library is contributing this much toward, toward minimum wage, or especially the other one, is a little bit complicated. I can talk in general terms.
That's okay.
Get back to you, but.
Yeah, you can just maybe email Mr. Carter. Yeah, I was just with the, with the two parts, I was just wondering what the first one was and what the second one was, but you can get that.
Right, yeah.
Does any supervisor have any questions of Mr. Ewing? Okay, well, thank you for being here, Mr. Ewing, we appreciate that a lot.
I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, this moves us to item N six. Amanda Jones, the president of the Boys and Girls Club with their budget request. And we welcome you, Ms. Jones, to our meeting.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I am here along with, excuse me, my colleague James Compton, and a couple of our board members back in the back. Our founder, one of our founders, and her daughter Judy Brown, and Janet Miller, who is also on our board. We are a volunteer leadership committee, so we're not actually fully a board. But we are here tonight to make our request that we have submitted to you for $10,000 for your fiscal year '23 budget for the James River Boys and Girls Club. We currently serve 20 of your Buckingham County students, and we serve 50 to 60 year-round. So the 20 are an after-school, partaking in an after-school program, and we serve 50 to 60 of your students during the summer programs. The funding for the amount of $10,000 would support the actual cost of serving four of our club kids from Buckingham County for the entire year, including after-school activities and programming, and a full-day summer program. The James River Club opened in 2014, and our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to realize their full potential as productive, responsible, and caring citizens. We serve children ages five to 18. We have year-round enrichment programs that are designed to promote three priority outcomes: academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship. Along with supporting the actual cost, and I do have a typo in my memo, instead of two club members, we, you would be supporting four club members. Funding from Buckingham County would be a key endorsement for our organization and the services we provide. We are an excellent resource for families. I don't know if you know that childcare across the area is roughly $13,000 per child per year for families. So our club lowers the barriers to allow families to have access to our clubs at a very nominal fee of just $15 to $35 for the entire year for each child. We offer a great place for the kids to thrive, grow, learn, be mentored, and have a safe place for out-of-school activities. The fiscal year '23 funding from Buckingham County would also help the club provide the essential services to address the long-term COVID issues that so many of our children have faced. Every day after school, the club kids' programs participate in Power Hour, which is our homework helpers, career launch, STEM, mindfulness, healthy cooking, and a whole host of activities, outdoor activities as well. During the summer, we engage in youth services with summer reading, community-based programs, financial literacy classes, and other high-yield activities that the kids participate in. Finally, your support would be a sound investment in an organization that has a proven track record for fiscal responsibility, strategic growth, and stewardship. When we opened our doors in 2014, thanks to the generosity of Judy Brown and her late husband, and several of their friends and family members, we were able to raise $1.5 million for the first five years of our operating budget. And because of donors, 75% of our operating expenses comes from donors, both private and grants. And we have a very nominal, nominal 2% from the fees that the kids pay for their programming each year. So we have been able to utilize that money and leverage that money that we raised early on and not have to dip into that pool of money to keep us going. However, during the pandemic, we suffered, as everyone did, and we did, for the first time, have to dip into that pool of money. And what we used a portion of that money for was for Buckingham County students. The busing service from the, from the county was eliminated, and so we ended up hiring our own busing service to bus your students, 27 of your students, to our facility. Well, we're at 20 right now, but. Pre-COVID, we had 50 of your students coming on a daily basis. And so we are really trying to get back to those pre-pandemic numbers. And your support would enable us to continue going forward. We have reached out to the town of Scottsville as well for funding, and we do receive funding from Charlottesville Albemarle. We don't receive funding from Fluvanna in a monetary sense, but they do provide free busing services for all of their students. So with that said, you have the letter in your packet that states a lot of that, but there are a couple of bullet points that I'd like to go over with you. Currently, right now, as of today, we had 14 Buckingham students, 13 Fluvanna students, and 50 Albemarle students. We, our membership is from five to 18 years of age. Roughly have about 70 students per day. In the summer, that jumps to about 95. In the summer, we have, well, I should say, pre-COVID, when we were fully engaged in our summer program, we had 46 Buckingham students that were enrolled out of that 95. To give you a little summary of how our kids are split up across ethnicities, we have 54% white, 33% black, 7% Hispanic or Latino, 5%, two or more races, and 1% other. 75% of our students qualify for free or reduced lunch, and 39% come from single-parent households. So to say that we provide a service of excellent programming at a very nominal fee for either single or double-working families, for exceptional programming, both after-school and all-day during the summer, spring break, and vacations, we feel like we provide an excellent service for your kids. And we are committed to your kids. And for us to be able to reach out to those kids who, once their transportation was ended, to reach out to them and say, we want you here, we want, whatever it takes, we will do it. And so we are committed to providing excellent programming for your kids. Let's see if I've missed anything. During COVID, just so that you know, it's also on your sheet, we turned ourselves into, or the James River Club turns themselves into an academic support center, providing full-day school, supervised school, basically, for 27 Buckingham County students. So the school opened at 7:30 in the morning so that those family members who were working could drop their kids off and pick them up at 5:30 at the end of the day. Sometimes that extended a little bit later due to COVID circumstances. We have a little research that was done by the University of Michigan that says $1 invested in a Boys and Girls Club returns $9.60 in economic development, which is return to the community. So an investment of $10,000, a return back to your communities, hopefully for our kids sitting in your spots one day, of $100,000. So we do feel like while we are not an emergency service, we are an essential service. And we are committed to serving your kids. And I don't think that you will disagree that we have a proven track record of programming and an amazing staff of local, two full-time staff members, seven-time part, seven part-time staff members. And the kids during COVID, they couldn't wait to get back to the club. So we're very thankful that measures have been lifted, and we are getting back to normal. We're not quite there yet in terms of our numbers, but we do have quite a, quite a few of the Buckingham County kids that are very eager, that are coming now, and very eager to come in the future. The proposal of you helping us with that, that we would greatly appreciate it. So, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Jones at present? One question I have for Mr. Carter is have we, do we fund them currently or in the past? Because I know with regards to the buses, that was sort of a different angle of funding.
We do not currently fund them, and if I remember correctly, the schools were providing transportation.
Correct.
And then they've stopped doing that. So that was the kind of funding they were getting.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Jones?
I do, Mr. Miles.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jones, how many, what age groups do these students?
Five to 18. And percentage-wise, what we typically have on an average day, we talk about average daily attendance, ADA. And typically, those grade levels are 40% elementary school, 25% middle school, and 8% high school. The reason we don't have more 18-year-olds is because they have typically hidden the work, you know, are, have joined the workforce. And, but during the summer program, our numbers for 18-year-olds just skyrocket, so it's really quite amazing.
Yes, sir, Vice Chairman Chambers.
You have about 20 from Buckingham?
I'm sorry?
You have about 20 from Buckingham, you say?
Yes, sir, currently, yes.
Okay, thank you.
What is your total enrollment from all the locality systems?
100 to 150 yearly.
Percentage-wise, that would be Buckingham.
About, yeah, 33%. Buckingham and Fluvanna neck and neck, clearly Albemarle County and Southern Albemarle is our largest.
I want to commend you for the great job you're doing. That's a good investment in the kids, you're doing a great thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, Ms. Jones, and thank you both for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, board members, our next item is, we have two public hearings scheduled. The first one is O1, a public hearing for adoption of a solid waste fee ordinance pursuant to the authority and the Code of Virginia to collect a fee from non-residents who own real estate in the county and residents who are exempt from purchasing a county sticker to help cover the cost of the management of solid waste. And Mr. Carter, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you kind of summed it up, said everything that I was going to say. I'll just remind everybody, this is a fee to, as the chairman said, to get those non-residents, so people that own property here that do not live here. Currently, they're getting their solid waste sticker for free. I tried to get a number on what we've given away in the past couple of years. I think the number I heard today was we've given those 700 last year for free. This also would apply to people with farm-use vehicles. Their vehicle's not got their registration that we require for county stickers in details, but they are getting their county stickers for free as well. So they would pay a fee to get their solid waste sticker to use the dumpsters. We put in this to charge the same as a county sticker, so $25 of the fee we got listed here. That's up to the board's discretion on what you want to charge, but we started. If a person has a county sticker, they get to use the dumpster for $25. If somebody wants to buy a solid waste permit, it's the same fee, $25.
But you can't go to Ohio, though, can you? That's my, my understanding before that we had to stay what we were paying. Or we can, or can we raise it?
I think you can.
It's a state registration.
Right, you can't go past.
What was that Supervisor Bryant? Supervisor Bryant, did you say something? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I should, I think we're going to raise it if we, if we have to.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. So I declare the public hearing opened. Are there any speakers, Miss Land?
No, sir.
Okay, so there are no ones, no one signed up, so I'll declare the public hearing closed. And what is your pleasure on adopting this ordinance or amending the ordinance, gentlemen?
I think it's good to have at least something that they're paying for, but do you want to raise it up high or not?
It's just for absentee landowners, is that what this is? Somebody that does not live here but owns land in Buckingham?
And people with farm-use tags that don't have the normal vehicle registration, but they get their stickers for free.
They'll be paying for theirs?
Yes, sir.
From this point on?
At least at 25, you're getting something, you're not getting nothing there. I would, should let us stay at 25, you know?
And like I said, if you want to increase it later on, we can always come back and.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to adopt the ordinance. All right, there's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to, um, adopt the ordinance as presented. Does anyone have any questions before we vote, or we're gonna, and we're gonna continue to use the board? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, Supervisor Davis, how do you vote? So, okay, he votes aye, so the, uh, vote is unanimous for that ordinance. Our next public hearing is item zero, oh, two, transfer of the old Centerra Building, Medical Building in the town of Dilwyn, um, to Centra Medical Group LLC so that it can deliver medical services to the public. So, um, Mr. Carter, did you want to introduce, um, this before, um, Mr. Angelo comes to speak to us?
Yes, sir, um. Yes, this is the medical, medical building that was donated to us. We're trying to donate to Centra for their use for medical services. Uh, Mr. Thomas Angelo is here tonight to talk about, with Centerra, Centra, to talk about the uses of that building and what they plan to do with that facility.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Angelo, welcome, we're excited to have you here, um, but do you have a presentation, sir, or you do not?
Yeah, this is a real quick one.
Okay.
I'll be as brief as I can.
Okay, so that's being brought up, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you for having me. My name's Tom Angelo, I'm a executive with Central Health, CEO of Central Southside Community Hospital. And we started studying, putting in a practice in Buckingham County in twenty-seventeen. Looking at our community health needs assessment, it was apparent that there was a need for primary care in this region. With Centerra's departure in twenty-twenty, um, I'll tell you, many members of the county, including some members of the board of supervisors, did approach us. Can you help us? You know, we have a big need for primary care, and now we have, we have very little. And so, besides that ask, um, our Central Southside Community Board also asked us to take a deep look at this. Twenty-twenty was a tough year, um, so we did punt for about a year, uh, but we've been studying this for some, um, time now. Next slide, please. And so just, you know, briefly, cause it, it matters, around community health within Buckingham County, out of a hundred and thirty-three counties, we're a hundred and twenty-fourth when it comes to health factors in the wrong direction. And so there's certainly, um, it's not just primary care that helps that certainly, but it's a step in the right direction. Uh, so clearly, a lack of primary care providers, and then you see that you have these health outcomes that are not favorable in our county as well, around obesity, smoking, um, alcohol, lack of access to exercise, physical inactivity, premature death, and many more. Next. Um, so we would be staffing the old Centerra Building with one physician initially, two medical office assistants, a radiology slash laboratory specialist, and an LPN. Our hopes, or not our hopes, we were pretty confident based off of the numbers we studied that you need more than one provider here in Buckingham County. And so as that need arise, we would certainly add at least a nurse practitioner to that physician group. Next, please. So our investment in that facility, um, and I'll show you in a second how we'll redo the front facade, redo parking, make it better handicap accessibility. There's a lot to do there, is, is, um, in excess of three-quarters of a million dollars. Which is why, and here's what the building would look like on the front, and then there's one more view. And so that's why we are respectfully requesting you to consider, uh, gifting of the building.
This is the front view, you said, sir? Oh, s, s, oh, it is, okay.
So currently, the way it's structured now, if you're looking at the building, the ramp is to the left, you're gonna change it to the right?
Yes, currently, that's to the left, and it goes to the very back of the building. And so we'd have parking on the right side of the building, very close to that entrance.
Is, are you, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, okay, wow, um.
I can keep going.
No, 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 I was, I was thinking, okay, no, I'm, I'm just a little bit in awe because of, this is really wonderful, and we are, this, this board has worked, each of us has worked really hard to, and we've listened, and we appreciate this great partnership because it's really gonna lead to better health outcomes in every district of our county and every, and every square inch. And, um, this is really amazing, and I'm very much pleased and humbled by this, and, and I know that other members are too, that this is happening, so. Um, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Angelo? Yes, Supervisor Bryant.
Do you do business with the VA?
Do, we do, we always work with the VA. We don't have any direct contracts with, um, why do you ask?
I, if, if, if they were to send you a referral on a, on a veteran to build them, would you build them?
Yeah, there's certain mileage requirements, you gotta be so far from the closest VA district, but yeah, we'd look at anything, always. We're always trying to help people, um, a lot of people are underserved, and we have to help them with their charity care eligibility and whatnot.
Okay, okay. In terms of, of a timeline, um, could you maybe talk, uh, briefly about that, sir, as to, you know, start here and then?
Yeah, so thank you, that was what I was gonna end with, so setting expectations, there will not be a physician in there this month. Um, cause, you know, the one thing that happens anywhere where we've had a physician exit a county around, you know, the central region where the hospital is in Farmville, is everybody gets really upset because you don't have a physician there. And you're always, you know, trying hard to recruit and get someone there. Uh, we do have one, uh, person that we're considering already, um, for this county, that I can't name who that is at this time. And then we are actively recruiting already. Uh, there will be some, um, construction that needs to happen, and some bidding, uh, um, of this project that needs to go out. We had to secure the building first, of course, and so I would suspect, best case, late this year, probably more likely, beginning of next year.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir, Supervisor Allen.
So, it looks like you're gonna do x-rays at the building too, or you're not?
That's, yes.
And all lab work, kinda like, then, I know had some places have trouble with Medicare, Medicaid, is that a?
That will not be a problem here.
Okay, good, that's, cause I, a lot of people have that issue that they need.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Absolutely, thank you, and I, and it just, just ever so briefly, I'd, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge our former county administrator, Ms. Carter, who helped us out a lot on that, and, uh, Dr. Bruce Clemens with Centerra, and the Chamber of Commerce also played a big push initially. So, is there a motion to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yeah, oh, I apologize, so I'd like to open the public hearing, thank you all for keeping me in check. So, um, we're gonna open the public hearing, and, let's see, so do we have any speakers signed up, Ms. Land?
We have one on, uh, virtual.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Would you state your name and your, um, address, please?
Sure, I'm Micah Brickhill Atkinson. Uh, my family resides in District Four in, uh, one-nine-two Union Church Road, Buckingham, Virginia. Um, I'm currently in Charlottesville, Virginia.
Okay, go right ahead, you've got three minutes, ma'am.
All right, and my name is Micah Brickhill Atkinson. I'm a Buckingham County native, I'm currently a resident physician for UVA Family Medicine. I appreciate this opportunity to comment on the transfer of the former Buckingham Family Medicine Building to Centra Medical Group. It's well established that rural America faces primary care physician shortages and worse health outcomes to match. Access to primary care is associated with improved health and well-being. I commend the board for strategically planning the future of this medical office space in a way that prioritizes continued care for the community. When I heard of the potential transfer to Centra, several questions arose in my mind. For example, was Centra planning to open in a timely manner? Were they invested in creating a sustainable, successful practice? And would they choose to hire a physician? I was so pleased to hear that the county leadership considered the same questions and received favorable responses from Centra about a fully functional physician-in-growth practice. I was also happy to hear about the plans for renovating the space, which really evidences investment and success. When my final two years of residency are over, I look forward to working more on the front lines to meet primary care physician shortages. In the meantime, I'm reassured to see steps taken towards prioritizing health in Buckingham County. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brickhill, Brickhill Atkinson, we appreciate you being here. And, do you have any other speakers, Ms. Land?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so I will now close the public hearing, and, uh, did you, who was gonna make that motion, I'm sorry?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go, yes, sir, Supervisor Bryant.
I move the Buckingham County transfer by special warranty deed to real estate improvements located at sixty-five Brickyard Road, Dilwyn, Virginia, two-three-nine-three-six, which contains point-seven-two acres, more or less, to Central Medical Group LLC, pursuant to the terms of a real property donation agreement between Buckingham County and the Central Medical Group LLC.
Okay, there's a motion, and.
That's a motive, Mr., uh, Bryant, and?
Say again?
Oh, the second.
You guys have a law in the second.
Oh, and that Carl Carter, the county administrator, uh, being hereby is authorized to sign the real property donation agreement and deed of conveyance on behalf of the county.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded by Supervisor Allen, it's been seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers, um, on this motion of transfer. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Dennis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, and Supervisor Bryant?
What does it gotta do?
Okay, that motion is unanimous. Supervisor Bryant, did you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, to item P, there are no zoning matters, so we will skip to item Q, item Q-one. Uh, Mr. Hill with Solid Waste Department requesting an appropriation of forty-five-hundred dollars for tire day to be held on April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. So what is your pleasure?
Guess we have to do it.
Still move? Yeah.
We're gonna advertise this accordingly to let residents know.
Yep, and also, uh, the date will be April sixteenth at Gene Dixon Park from seven to eleven-thirty. So we'll put that in advertisement.
Excellent, so, uh, motion made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen to, uh, oh, to appropriate the funds. Anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item is Q-two, recommendation for Board of Zoning Appeals to be appointed by the Circuit Court Judge to replace, uh, Stephanie Roach, and that is, this, that's Maisel District, I've talked to, uh, Cherie Brickhill, um, who's actually the mother of the, um, lady who was just commenting, so, um, I would like to put her up for the recommendation, she lives in District Four.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers to, um, appoint for consideration by the Circuit Court Judge Cherie Brickhill. Anyone have any questions? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. The next item we have before us is Q-three, Dr. Carter G. Woodson Resolution in recognizing April the second as Carter G. Woodson Day. Is there a second to that? Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to, um, pass a resolution and adopt that. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay.
Matthews, we have to wait on Matthews.
We have to wait on him, or should we? Should we wait on Mr. Matthews?
We'll have to wait. Okay, let's, with, with be at ease just for a moment, please.
Yeah, cause we have, if we have stayed, then he has to give.
Right. All right, the motion is unanimous. The next item is Q-four, Mr. Davis, Emergency Management, Consider Appropriation of Twenty-Nineteen Homeland Security Grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars.
He got his name wrong. So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to appropriate that amount listed. Does anyone have any questions before we vote?
No, sir.
All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is unanimous. The next item is. I apologize. Mr. Davis, welcome.
I appreciate that, gentlemen, uh, that was a good thing for us to get. Uh, while we had the floor, I did want to take a minute, uh, just to recognize Ms. Holland and, and all of her recent efforts for us. She's tidying up some large-scale projects for the county that have some looming due dates, and, um, uh, this week is actually, uh, Emergency Management Professionals Week, um, at the national level. So it's kind of fitting that, that she was gonna be in front of you guys this evening to deliver some good news. But anyways, I just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation, uh, to her in front of you guys, and then maybe kind of get, get your backing on that, uh, just since we have this week here in front of us, but, yeah.
Good news, thank you for all you do.
So if it's the professional assistant week, that means that you should be taking her to lunch?
I'll, I'll get her some lunch, yeah.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, Ms. Holland, are you good? Okay.
I think Jamie should make her, for his help on this grant, it was huge.
Good job.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
They're gonna go to McDonald's, sir.
Our next item is item Q-five, um, consider a resolution in memoriam of, um, Pat Bo who served as chairman of the Planning Commission for many years.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, mo, motion by Supervisor Bryant, and seconded by Supervisor Allen to consider the res, to adopt the resolution that is.
I would like to get his family involved to bring him here.
For presentation?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, yeah.
All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, the mo, the motion carries unanimously. The next item is number seven, consider, um, an appointment to the Planning Commission for District Three, and that being your district supervisor Matthews. Do you have any input, sir, or consideration? On, uh, on, on Q-six?
Consider appointment to District Three.
Not, not tonight, but we are, we are entertaining.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Bring it back next morning.
Okay.
That's pretty big shoes to fill, let you know that.
It is, yes, it is.
Absolutely.
We're not gonna rush to do it, so we're gonna get it right.
You're fine.
Excellent. The next item is, uh, item seven, consider an appointment to the Piedmont Virginia Community College Board in place of Mr. Joseph Schroegs, and send Mr. Schroegs a letter of appreciation. And I know we just got this tonight, so we might need some time to, unless anyone has anybody to think about that.
Mr. Schroegs might have a, uh, somebody he would recommend, he would, would work with, let's wait and talk to him.
Okay, duly noted, so, but, but we will go ahead and send that letter of appreciation, so. Okay, and item eight is consider an appointment to the Piedmont Senior Resources Board of Directors. Uh, Supervisor Matthews has been serving in the past in his term on that, uh, due to the Piedmont Senior Resources ballot has expired, so.
Do you recommend, recommend it, Mr. Matthews?
I was planning on doing it myself, sir. Uh, I'm not stepping down, but.
Well, good, I'm making a motion to stay there.
To reappoint Supervisor Matthews?
Make a motion to stay there. I thought you said term expired.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that one, sir.
That's what I was told, yeah.
Well, you get it straight the next time, get me messed up.
All right, the motion is by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to reappoint Mr. Matthews to the Piedmont Senior Resources Board of Directors. Anyone have any questions? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, motion is unanimous. Next item is item Q, I'm sorry, item R, county attorney matters, does Mr. Wright have any?
Look at this right here.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I come before you tonight asking for consideration on a matter involving the hotel that's developing here in the county. As you remember, we, we authorized transfer of property to the county, you took a deed of trust back for the purchase price of thirty-five thousand dollars. Contacted by the attorney for the, uh, hotel, and advised that they had run into a little snag. Since we had a first lien against the property to secure the purchase price for thirty-five thousand dollars, that the lender would not agree to be in a second position, they want to be a first position there. It's about six, six million dollars plus is what they want, are borrowing to put that project up. We came up with a notion that they would deposit with the county the whole. Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I come before you tonight asking for consideration on a matter involving the hotel that's developing here in the county. As you remember, we, we authorized transfer of property to the county. You took a deed of trust back for the purchase price of thirty-five thousand dollars. Contacted by the attorney for the, uh, hotel, and advised that they had run into a little snag. Since we had a first lien against the property to secure the purchase price for thirty-five thousand dollars, that the lender would not agree to be in a second position. They want to be a first position. They are, it's about six, six million dollars plus is what they want, are borrowing to put that project up. We came up with a notion that they would deposit with the county the whole purchase price, thirty-five thousand dollars. That thirty-five thou- thousand dollars would secure the performance and act as the same guarantee that the deed of trust acts at. We would hold that until they had finished all their things, so they were, to earn that as an incentive, and then upon completion, that money would be returned to them. If they don't do it, we keep the money of the part of it that we do. Now, to accomplish that, we need to have a, uh, substitution of collateral agreement, and also need to execute a deed of release of that deed of trust. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have about that, and then if you find it, uh, acceptable, I'd ask that you authorize that type of transaction.
I'll make a motion. I think we should go further with it.
Okay.
So, so, all right, the motion would be to, um, to agree to this approved, approval of substitution of collateral. So does anyone have any questions before we vote? Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers.
I'll ask the county administrator to sign the agreement.
Right.
And to se- secure the non-negotiable thirty-five thousand dollar note to be released.
Any, no, seconded by Supervisor Matthews. Anyone questions? All right, all in favor, please cast your vote. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir? Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your report? Thank you.
You can't mess up a six million dollar.
Our next item is item S, County Administrator Report. So, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much for you tonight. I just wanna make you aware that, uh, Cody Davis, who's just up here, has, uh, officially been trained and passed, uh, uh, fireman's instructional class, so he can now teach firefighter one. So it's good news for Cody in that regards, and my other piece of information, I will begin you guys your budget book next Monday, so look forward to that. But we don't have a meeting, it's just I'll be delivering the books to you, so no meeting next Monday.
You're gonna deliver?
I'm gonna deliver, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
You got your own, haven't you?
But, yeah, you will get them next Monday.
I can't wait to get mine.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Put the X to it.
Your, um, informational items are before you under T. Unless anyone have any questions, are there, are there any other board matters to be heard under item U, gentlemen? Okay. Item V, Executive Closed Session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into the executive closed session, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. That's Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one dot A dot three.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The motion has been made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Allen to enter into closed session under the said code of Virginia. Please record your vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir? Supervisor Davis, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay. Then mo- motion carries unanimously, so we are now in executive closed session.
All right, so how do we have him in closed session?
We're gonna.
We're gonna stay in.
We're gonna stay?
We're gonna stay in.
Well, because we got-
Yeah.
Supervisor Davis.
No, we're used to it.
Hey.
You agree with him?